Hello, welcome back to my channel. My name is Megan. If you are new here, happy 2023. It is officially a new year, which I am so excited about. So today is January 2nd. If you're new, don't forget to like, subscribe, comment down below. I post videos two times a week, Wednesdays and Saturdays. I actually just took a little break because I did vlogmas. So I did 25 days of uploads in the month of December, which was crazy. It was my first time ever doing vlogmas and it was nuts. But I did it. And so from basically Christmas until now, so today is January 2nd. I just took off of vlogging. I like the time between Christmas and New Year's to be like a time for me to be able to like reflect, like tune inward, do a lot of like goal setting. I do my vision board. I reflect on the year that just passed and I make intentions for the year to come. And I'm actually just about to sit down to film like a 2023 reset with me because now that I have everything done, I want to go through all my goals with you and just share how you can do the same thing if you haven't done so already. So yeah, that is why I'm all like ready. I curled my hair. I have like a little bit of makeup on. If you saw any of my previous vlogs, I'm like obsessed with this new lip combo. It's the Rare Beauty Lip Liner in the color Worthy, I think it's called. And then I'm using the Tower, is it 23 or 28? Lip Gloss and it is in the color pistachio, I think. Is that it? Yeah, I think so. And I'm obsessed with the lip gloss. Like it is lasts so long, but it's so like nice on your lips. Like it's not sticky and I just think it's a really beautiful color. So I'm obsessed. And yeah, just wearing like comfy's today because I'm still technically on holidays today. So because Sunday was the first, Monday is a stat holiday. So I'm off today, but I'm kind of like treating it like a work day. I'm kind of wanting to get like caught up. I'm getting organized for the work week ahead and just like doing like any last minute things that I have to do for myself. So yeah, welcome back to the channel. I've had a whole morning as you've seen already. I got up, did my morning routine. I took Abel for a walk. He's just chilling on the bed. We got this cooling blanket and he's like obsessed with laying on that portion of the bed. Or sorry, a weighted cooling blanket and that side is cool, the cooling side. So he likes it. But then I went to the gym. It was also my first time literally in a year doing a solo workout or just like strength training. I for 2022 did all group fitness, which is crazy to think. But my gym has really good classes and I just got like in the hang of that. So that's what I did for all of 2022. So today was like my first workout, like just solo, me, my headphones and a good workout. So that was nice. Yeah, came home, showered, got ready. And now I just made myself a cup of coffee, which I don't know why I did because every time I film, I never end up drinking it because I'm obviously talking. But yeah, I'm so excited for this year. I actually had a really, really good 2022. A lot of really exciting things happened in 2022 for me. We lived out west for half the year and then we moved home to Ontario. We got married. I did all of my wedding related things like my bridal shower, bachelorette, obviously our wedding and we also had our honeymoon. So we traveled to Spain. So just like a lot of good things happened in 2022. It was honestly one of the best years of my life. Like I'm so grateful for everything that happened. I started Daily Well, which if you're new around here is a wellness brand. It's focused on community, like growth, learning and bringing people together to talk about all things health and wellness and alternative wellness modalities. So yeah, I'm very happy with that. I have so many plans for in the new year. So just like a lot of good things that happened last year. So I'm really excited for 2023. I have some, I would say like some big-ish goals, but also nothing like too crazy because I want to be mindful of not overdoing it and just like giving myself the time to actually complete the goals without burning myself out. But I'm going to post that whole 2023 reset. So you guys can tune into that if you're interested in hearing about all that. But yeah, welcome back to the channel. Yeah, I'm going to take you along for my week this week. So it'll probably be like a few days of the week to see what we get up to. Again, it's like the first week of the new year. So a lot of like getting back into things, nothing too crazy in terms of plans, just trying to take it easy after a very busy like holiday season. So yeah, I'm going to go film this now and I will check in with you guys later. But welcome back. Right. Hey, you look scary. What? It's much later now. Just did some work, filmed video, did some stuff for podcast, which I'll share with you later. But now I'm going to make some dinner. So we're going to do a little like ground turkey vegetable stir fry tonight. So I'll share all the details with you. Okay, so I've added everything in like a one pot wonder. So we have like the ground turkey. There is carrots, celery, broccoli, onion and peppers. And I just added a bunch of seasonings. You can add whatever you want. So I have like salt, pepper, like a taco seasoning, seasoning, salt, chili powder, just a little bit of everything. And then I have the rice cooking in here. So I'm going to add that in a second and just get it all mixed together. All right, and this is what it looks like when it's all together. So gonna have some dinner now. All right, it is much later now. If you watched my reset video, one of my goals is to drink three of these a day. So I'm behind today. Sorry, it's dark in here and I'll put on a lamp. But yeah, it's later now. I finished dinner, played with Abel for a little bit. We cleaned up and now I think it is 7:30 ish. I'm just going to do like 30 minutes of some stuff on my computer because I actually go back to work tomorrow and I'm like in a pretty good place. Let's see if I can. I got this new tripod and it's really good, but you really have to like adjust it. Oh boy. Okay. Kinda, you're kinda straight. But yeah, so I go back to work tomorrow and I'm in pretty good shape. Like I have everything ready to go for tomorrow and like my day planned out. But I'm going to do like a couple more things that I just want to get off my plate. And that is planning the event that is going to happen for Daily Well this month. So I'm planning to do like a goal setting and vision boarding workshop. So if you're in K T L B, come check it out. But I just want to do like a couple of things for it because I feel like tomorrow is going to be very much like work, work and getting into things. But yeah, I'm only going to do a little bit because I've done quite a bit today on my laptop. So maybe like half an hour, like 40 minutes. And then I'm going to make a tea and unwind. I've been watching One Tree Hill on Prime Canada. It just came out like, I think it came out basically over the Christmas break. So I've been binging that because that's like my nostalgic show from high school. I absolutely loved One Tree Hill. So I can drink water, do a few things on my computer and then unwind for the night. So yeah, I might catch up with you guys in a little bit here. But otherwise I'll be picking up the block tomorrow. It's going to be like a few days at this point in my life. So here we go. Okay, sorry, it is later. Sorry for the crappy quality, but I'm on my phone. So my camera's upstairs, but it is much later. I just took off all my makeup. I'm wearing this Willie Ball Farm sweater. If you guys know, you know, I literally wore it for like a week straight when I got it. But hair is up. I have a two squares of dark chocolate and I'm just about to watch One Tree Hill. It came out on Prime Canada on December 23rd and I'm literally on episode 19 of season one. I'm obsessed. This was like such a nostalgic show for me because it's all I watched in high school. I also have a calm tea. It's by the brand Traditional Medicinals. I've shared that a lot of my vlog like every night before bed. I always have some sort of herbal tea. So I'm just going to hang out, watch this for maybe like an hour or so, hour and 15. And then I'm going to get ready for bed and read. So I will catch you guys tomorrow. Good morning. It is the next day. It's Tuesday and today is officially the get back to work day. The holidays are over and yeah, it's a sad time. So it's back to work, but I'm ready. I think the break, I've definitely like had my time with it. So I'm ready to get back into routine. So woke up this morning, had the full like morning routine, did all the things. Lemon water, journal, read. I'm actually reading a new nonfiction book, which, or sorry fiction, no wait, nonfiction book. If you guys watched my 2023 reset with me, I talked about wanting to get back into reading one nonfiction book a day. So I'm reading Manifest by Roxy. I can't think of her name, but anyways, it's pretty popular right now. So I'm sure you've heard of it. But yeah, so far really good. But I'm going to make a coffee now and clean up the kitchen for breakfast. I just got back from taking Abel for a walk. So I'm going to do that and then I'm going to get to work for the day. So let's get into it. Okay, it is a lot later as you can tell by the color. Official pitch black outside, but I literally did nothing today other than sit at my computer and work because it was the first day back to work. I feel like I had so many things to like catch up on and do. So it was busy, but yeah, so I didn't really vlog. I literally was working like the whole day up until now and it is 6:06. I'm actually just exporting my 2023 reset with me. So that will be live on my channel when you're watching this, like it's going to go up before this. So I'm just exporting it for some reason. It's taking like so long, like double the amount of time that it is. I have no idea why. But yeah, so I'm just like on the floor because I'm putting like a few things away. I can't remember if I said this at the beginning of the vlog or not, but over the Christmas break, I did like a huge purge. I, I can insert like a couple of clips, but I basically like cleaned out both of my closets. So we have two closets, like door closet. So I went through all of those purged a bunch of clothes, like folded everything, got rid of things I wasn't using anymore. Then I had like a keep all closet that had a bunch of stuff from like wedding, like just like throwing crap in there and I organized all of that. I took like all my clothes out and like refolded everything, like went through everything. So did like a huge purge and then I went through my desk and I have like, I'll show you guys. I have like one of these, it's just like the Ikea. I think it's like the mom brand or something like that. But I literally, every drawer was like packed to the brim with just like stuff, especially from like the wedding. They accumulated like so many like cards and like receipts and paperwork and all that stuff. So I just like went through everything, fully cleaned it out. I can show you guys actually what it looks like now. So this top drawer, I know it doesn't like look organized, but it's like all my electronics and some chocolate. And this drawer is just like some old notepads as well as my coaching reference books. This one is, this is everything I use every single morning. So I always pull it this like full stack for my morning routine. And then this is my human design book that I'm reading and some oracle cards. This is like paperwork. So this is like all of our marriage items. This is like tax stuff and then able documents. So like important documents, I would say. And then this one's like pretty random, but like kind of empty. So we have some stuff from like our wedding, like our guest book and just some like extra pens and stuff. So fully cleaned out that which felt so good. And the last thing that I did was I fully did like a digital detox on my laptop. You don't realize like how many like files you store on your laptop over time, but I was like constantly getting those notifications like you have like essentially barely any storage left. So like do something about it. So I went through my full laptop and just like purged so much. I think I got rid of over 20,000 files on my computer and I also moved like a huge chunk of stuff over to my external hard drive because through my other business mentor, Poppy, I have so many client stuff and I do store them on like a Google drive, but I have like a backup just in case. But so many past clients, like I put everything on an external hard drive. So it wasn't taking up room. But yeah, made a lot of space, like cannot believe how much stuff I cleared just because I wanted to be ready for 2023. But the whole point of me coming on here was because I just had like a random bag of stuff that I'm putting away that I brought from upstairs, but I wanted to show you guys. I feel like I haven't been able to show you guys because we were gifting these at Christmas, but we got our wedding photos in, in November. And our gift for like our family was to print out some of the pictures that we had of us with them. So I wanted to wait just in case like anyone watched the vlog. But here's one of Daniel. Oh, she's going to be able to see that of Daniel and I. I'm like literally obsessed. Her photographer was so good. Let me see if I can get another one. This is like my parents with Daniel and I love. So cute. Anyways, yeah, so love these. I'm going to put this one like at my desk so I can look at it every day. But yeah, it's my little update. Daniel is just making dinner right now. I think he's making like chicken, vegetables, maybe some potatoes. But yeah, I'm just exporting my blog. No idea why it's taking so long. It literally is like a 30 minute vlog and it's so far taken like an hour and 20 minutes to export. Not sure why. But yeah, so just doing that. And then in terms of tonight, I don't have too much on the agenda. I'm going to kind of chill. I'm going to try and go to bed early because I ended up going to bed so late last night, which like if you watched my 2023 reset, I wanted to go to bed at the same time every night, which was 10:30 and that did not happen. But yeah, I ended up getting like delayed with some stuff. So I want to just like unwind and want to meditate and maybe watch some One Tree Hill, just like relax, maybe even take a bath. Who knows? Who knows where the night will take us? But that is the plan as of right now. I'll show you guys what we end up having for dinner when it's ready. Okay, here it is. So cute. All right, here's the dinner for tonight. Having some potatoes, mixed veggies and chicken. This is like Daniel's favorite meal. Good morning. It is Wednesday. I'm doing an all black look today. I just have this like oversized black cardigan. It's just from Marshall's, but pretty old. I'm wearing the Lulu, I think it's like the Kate t-shirt. And I'm wearing my airy flare leggings, my slippers. I don't have any meetings today, so just like comfy casual. Just made a coffee, been playing fetch with Abel because it's raining outside. Abel, that's not for you. And yeah, going to get to work now. In terms of today, it's like another typical work day. I might go to a coffee shop later in the day if I've been like getting a little stir crazy because yesterday was like a really long sitting at my desk day. So I might switch it up and I think I'm going to gym at five. So that will be the plan for today. But yeah, going to get to work now. Hello, it is a little bit later. I was actually super productive and got like a bunch of work done. So that's good, but it's about, it's almost lunchtime. So I'm going to eat something, I think. And then I might go to Starbucks to do some more work. I think I talked about this before and if I didn't, it's in my 2023 reset. But one habit I want to have is just like breaking up my week and going to work at a coffee shop a couple of times just to like, I don't know, change up my environment. I feel like it really affects me when I'm in the same spot all day long. But I got a quick package in. I want to show you guys. So I actually got it from Indigo, chapters, whatever you call it. And it is from the Love and Lore brand that they have, that they store and stock. They're like super soft cotton pajamas. I actually had this on my Christmas list, not these particular ones, but similar ones. But I didn't get them. So I chose to order these ones, I think on boxing day or like boxing week. But oh my gosh, I can't open these. But they are like the softest, okay, cool. Pajamas and like the softest material. It's like a really soft cotton brand. I don't know the exact, I want to just say they're cotton, honestly. But super comfy. I'll show you guys what I got. So I got the color black and it's a set. So it's obviously going to be wrinkled right now because I just took it out of the package. But these are them. I'm sure you've seen something similar before. So it just has like the white detailing long sleeve and then it has some matching pants. And I love like the wide leg, but yeah, it's just like a really soft material. So I'm super excited. I've wanted these for quite a while or like the style of pajama, just to kind of like change into. Because I feel like working from home, I always hang in like sweatpants and stuff like that. And I really want to like transition into like pajamas when I'm getting ready for bed. So super cute, very excited about those. I'll show you guys if I wear them tonight, but I have to like get all the wrinkles out of them because they were super like literally put into this like tiny little bag. But yeah, so I am going to get my stuff together here in a second and maybe go, like I said, to Starbucks. We have one like just down the street. So I'll just go for like an hour, maybe an hour and a half, do some work there, get myself a little treat and then we'll finish off the workday here at home. My plan is to go to the gym at five to a sculpting tone class. So we'll see if that happens. But Abel's just lounging like a little baby. All right, that's that day for you guys. Okay, I ended up just putting them on because I wanted to make sure they fit okay. But I obviously have a t-shirt on underneath, so picture it like this. But these are them, super cute. And then the pants. I don't know if you can see them, but they're like, yeah, the perfect length. And I like that they're kind of fitted versus like oversized. You could obviously like size up, but I got a size small in these. It's just like you can't buy individual sizes for each one. So I just did the small, but super happy with them. All right, I'm all done in Starbucks. That's such a like nice way to break up the day. I feel like I got so much done, which I was surprised because normally I'm like kind of stimulated in situations like that, like I want to like people watching stuff. But like I went there with a specific task in mind. Like I told myself, okay, I'm not just going to go and like find something to do. I'm like going specifically to work on this item for work. So I think it was good in that sense. Like I knew what I was doing and it's just like, yeah, had a tea, just like did my own thing. I think next time I'll probably ring my headphones just because like it is quite loud. But I honestly like really liked it. It's such a good way to like break up the day just so like, I feel like I'm not just sitting at my desk all day long and I can move around a little bit. So I really liked it. I'm definitely going to be doing that more often, but it's about quarter to three now. So I'm going to go home. I'm probably going to just like make myself like a little bite to eat and then I have a bit more work to do. And then if I go to the gym, I have to leave around like four, 35 ish, like at the latest. Cause my class is at five. So yeah, that's the plan. But a little update for you guys, working at a coffee shop was a success. So if you have the ability, like if you work from home, if you work remotely, I highly suggest just like once a week for a couple hours, like go to your local coffee shop and just like break up your day. It's such a nice like twist, especially today. It's so dreary and rainy outside. So I really liked it. Sorry if you can like also hear my heater, it's pretty cold. So I have that on right now, but okay, I'm going to get going now. Okay, I'm back at my desk. I made like the most random like meal. It's just some rice, some lettuce, cucumber and this like seven grain salad that I always have from Costco. I just have like my water that I got from Starbucks to finish more water. And then I wanted to show you guys, I just got this microphone. So spoiler alert, I'm going to be launching a podcast very, very soon. And I went with the blue Yeti. And this one had a lot of really good reviews. So I'm like definitely not a podcasting pro, but it had like, I don't know the word for it, but like the condenser option. So you could like record by yourself, record with someone else, but also record if like things are going on around you. So yeah, I'll show you guys when basically I unbox it and like get it all ready because Daniel's going to set it up for me. But yeah, super excited. All right, we are back from the workout. We're in pain and just made some dinner. We're having like a fajita night. So we have chicken. chicken cheese some peppers and onions rice lettuce and some shells and this is the best salsa if you have it at your Costco so gonna make that and eat Daniel you haven't sent a letter this vlog wow happy Thursday it's Megan in the future um I didn't vlog today because I honestly was just like at my computer didn't do much nothing to share you've seen it all week long but um we're just about to take the dogs for a walk it's raining or it's kinda drizzling it's pretty gross outside but I wanted to go ahead and end this vlog because Daniel and I are doing a little date night tonight and I'm just gonna be present not gonna film it but um I might start up like a weekend vlog tomorrow so I'm gonna go ahead and wrap this one up I think it's like I feel like I did quite a bit of stuff but we'll see but just wanted to say thank you for watching don't forget to subscribe like I post videos Wednesdays and Saturdays but happy first vlog of twenty twenty three I'll see you guys in my next video